We get back. But we'll start recording whenever you're ready, unless you already have it and we've just been blabbing.
No, now we're ready.
Okay. Justin, I think we're just gonna get started because we've got quorum, um, and then when Ian gets here, um, can join in. Great. Okay, so I will call to order the meeting of the City of Ferndale Planning Commission for Wednesday, February 21st, 2018. It, uh, oh. Sorry, I just noticed, I think, an error on the agenda. Uh, at 6:32 PM, we'll start with a roll call.
Commissioners Garrick.
Here.
Azar.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Brazen.
Here.
Williamson. Farr. Cassiel.
Here.
Kelly. Baker.
Here. And I know, uh, we heard from Commissioners Farr and Kelly, I believe, um, saying that they would be absent. Is there a motion to excuse those absences?
So.
Second.
Thanks. That's a motion by Councilman Martin with a second by Commissioner Brazen. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. That motion passes. Commissioner Williamson, uh, we do expect to be here shortly. Um, we can review this, should that status change. We'll move now to the approval of the agenda. Are there any changes or additions to tonight's agenda from the commission or from staff?
Did the chair say she found an error in it?
Yeah, but it's in the online version. It looks like the printed version is correct. Um, in the version I'm looking at online, it says that the meeting begins at 6:20 PM. But the printed version says 6:30, so I think it was, it must have been corrected.
Then I'll move to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Thank you. Uh, same motion and seconder as before, mo- motion by Councilman Martin with a second by Commissioner Brazen. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great. That motion passes. Thank you very much. We will move now to the approval of our minutes. We have two sets of minutes here. The first is from January 17th, 2018. What did I say about into the microphone?
Sorry, sorry, sorry.
Approval of the minutes for January 17th, 2018. Um, any corrections or questions about that set of minutes? And if not, I'm looking for a motion to approve them.
I wasn't here for one of them, so I prefer not to make the motion.
Uh, motion to approve the minutes says written.
Thank you. That's a motion from Commissioner Cassiel. Is there a second?
Second.
Thanks. That's a second from Commissioner Garrick. Dan, is this the one you were absent for?
No, I'll vote on it. I just didn't want it. Make the motion.
Oh, okay. I was just, okay. In that case, we don't need a roll call. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. So then there are no extensions?
No.
Great. All right. Motion passes. Uh, we will now take a look at our minutes from the February 7th, 2018 meeting. Any questions, corrections on those? And if not, a motion.
I move to, um, approve the, um, minutes from February 7th as written.
Second.
Thanks. That's a motion by Commissioners Azar with a second from Commissioner Cassiel. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And that motion passes. Thank you very much. We'll now move to item number four on our agenda, the call to audience. Uh, this is the time for anyone in the audience to address the commission on items that are not on the agenda tonight. If you have a question or a comment, um, on an item that is on the agenda, we'll address it at that time. Uh, but this is a time for you to address the commission on anything that's not on the agenda. Commissioner, did I just say Commissioner? Councilman Polica, welcome.
Mayor Protem Polica.
Commissioner Williamson, welcome. How are you?
Uh, Greg Polica.
Don't call me Mayor Protem. Call me Mayor if you want me.
Um. A few months ago, uh, you reviewed an ordinance for RVs, parking RVs into driveways. And, uh, I'm actually on the ordinance committee.
Okay.
And a, uh, a resident, uh, asked me to bring the issue up, uh, because they have an issue with a neighbor parking their RV. And there is very little distance. There's less than three feet between their home and where the RV is parked. Which makes it difficult if there's ever a fire for any assistance to get behind or around that RV. So, we looked, we talked to the po- fire department, we talked about it, and so the request is being made so that there is a greater distance between, uh, any house and any RV that is parked. Um, so I, I was hoping that you would revisit that ordinance, um, to reconsider the, the language. I know that you had concerns that it was putting an undue burden on some people that own RVs, but I don't, I don't think it will. It still allows people to temporary, temporarily park them in their driveway, which it does now. But any permanent parking would be required beyond the driveway, or beyond, um, the side yard, I should say.
Or off-site.
Yes. So I would, I would just request that you revisit that, if you could. And if you have any questions, don't, please don't hesitate to, to reach out to me.
So you're on the ordinance committee, Greg?
Yes.
And I just caught what you were saying. Mayor Protem, congratulations.
Oh, thank you.
Thought you were talking to me. It's been a long time, so. So the ordinance committee, um, did you guys hear this the, the first time around? Because it's come, it's been to planning commission twice.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we keep, it keeps coming back to us. The first time it came back, because there was some, there was a discrepancy with, between motorhome and, and, uh, RV and, and some of the descriptions. And I think, uh, the, the lawyer, Dan, uh, Dan Crist, uh, cleaned a lot of that up for clarity. And then it was brought back. And then I guess the second time, there was concern over, uh, the undue burden of anyone owning a, uh, an RV. And I own an RV, so actually this wouldn't allow me to park my RV in my yard, so.
Are you the neighbor with the?
No, no, no. Actually, it's a, a neighbor of the mayor's.
I missed the first time that it was discussed. The second time that it was discussed at this table, there was definitely a question of, are we doing this for, um, for sort of neighborhood appearance sake? Or are we really doing this for a legitimate fire safety reason? So it sounds like, um, what you're hearing at the ordinance committee, um, being re-articulated from the fire department is the fire safety
Correct.
concern, and that, and now you've heard it from residents. Okay, thank you.
Okay. So, thank you.
Thank you. That's helpful. All right. I'll bring that back around when we get to administrative items, so you can let us know how to proceed. Okay, thank you. Anyone else for, um, call to audience? You've got three minutes to address the commission on anything not on the agenda. All right. And we will move. To, um, it, uh, it was noted that Commissioner Williamson arrived at about 6:37, which is about when, uh, Commissioner, or Councilman Polica, uh, joined us at the podium. He, we'll move to our public hearing this evening. We have a public hearing on Central Business District Site Plan Review Landscape and Landscaping Ordinance Amendments. This is the first of two public hearings, but it is the end of a, of a lengthy planning process. Um, it has involved a couple of, of different, uh, bodies and entities in the city and, uh, was an outgrowth of the, uh, multi-year master planning process that we just went through. So after this public hearing tonight, before anything is adopted, there will be another public hearing, uh, before the city council. So this body just makes a recommendation to the city council, um, on whether or not to, uh, to, uh, accept amendments like are proposed tonight. So, public hearings, uh, like tonight's, are the public's chance to share your thoughts and questions, um, on this topic that's before the planning commission. We'll have a presentation by our city staff, uh, and then I will open the floor to the public. You'll have three minutes to share your comments. Uh, please address any comments to the planning commission. Please state your name and address for the record. And then once everyone has spoken, uh, I'll close the public hearing. And the planning commission will work to answer your questions and will deliberate on the issue. So, we'll begin, uh, with our presentation, and then I'll open the public hearing.
Sounds good. Good evening, everybody. Um, I thought it might be helpful just to kind of summarize where we're at today. A lot of this information you've seen before, but for those that have not, uh, been at the previous meetings, this hopefully, um, will fill in, um, any questions. And, um, it's not, by any means not all encompassing, but, um, certainly here to answer any questions, um, you might have. Also here, we have Erin Cattell, our city's sustainability planner, and then Kathleen Duffy from Smith Group JGR, who, um, both put in a ton of effort on this ordinance, as well as the landscape site plan and, uh, a few other ordinances that are all connected to this. So, um, this mostly just focuses on the central business district draft amendments, uh, but we can definitely talk through the other, um, two ordinance updates for this evening. So, um, just taking a few steps back. So, we initially started talking about, um, the attention that the downtown, um, should have as part of the master plan process. So one of the recommendations, uh, in the land use section of the master plan was, um, creating some design guidelines, or actually codifying some, um, design guidelines that the DDA and the city have kind of talked about for years, that have lived in different corners of the ordinance and some in documents that haven't been, um, actual ordinances and adopted. Um, and kind of formalizing those, um, to try and continue the, um, mixed use, um, and walkable nature of, of the city and continue our momentum moving forward. The recommendation, the master plan, actually talks about looking at all walkable parts of the city. So this was really the first step, and with as much attention that's been, um, on downtown, it seemed like we should definitely start, uh, in the central business district. So in June, we, uh, kind of kicked things off with a, um, forum that had a lot of architects and developers, um, talking with them just about how they design buildings in the city, how they do business in the city, um, what, what they know from development in other communities, um, and, and what they'd be looking for, um, in an ordinance update. And then we also had a joint planning commission and city council meeting. Um, I think there were some DDA members in that meeting as well that, um, kind of talked about, you know, looking at strategic plan goals, master plan goals, what the planning commission is seeing, what city council's hearing from constituents. And so that was kind of a good way to kick things off. So since that time, we've had, um, quite a few other meetings getting in front of various groups. So the DDA Design Committee gave a lot of great feedback in September, um, and then more recently, I think in, um, December or January, um, on an initial draft. Um, and obviously, we've been working with the planning commission through a number of drafts, as you see on the list there. Most recently, the, um, Kathleen and Erin presented to the, um, DDA Board, um, and got some good feedback there and then had a recommendation, um, of approval. Um, so it's great to have partners that the, the DDA, um, kind of believe in what these ordinance, this ordinance potential update would, um, kind of formalize going forward, some things that they've talked about in the past. So.
Through the chair, were you able to accommodate all the DDA suggestions, or is there any you're leaving behind?
Um, there was one suggestion, um, that, it also came from the DDA Design Committee. Initially, when we started this process, we said, you know, let's take a big step back and look at maybe all of Woodward and all of Nine Mile and the transit-oriented district overlay. Um, and the recommendation, I don't know if it was a recommendation, but more of a discussion about should we be making these ordinance amendments to the entire TOD overlay district? Right now, we're saying that should be phase two, um, just because I think it warrants more study. There's different build, uh, parcel widths. Woodward is on an angle. There's alleys in some areas. There's al-, there's not in others. So, um, I think probably needs a little bit more, um, in-depth research, but.
So to clarify, we're taking a more conservative approach?
Yes.
Thank you.
So, to date, here we are, um, for the first public hearing. Um, if the planning commission did recommend moving forward with this, uh, it would go to city council probably end of March for another public hearing as well. So, as I was kind of saying, phase one of this, um, potential ordinance amendment is, is really looking at the current downtown, the central business district, if you're looking at the zoning map, um, making a strong efficence, emphasis on design, uh, place-making, walkability, uh, making a streamlined predictable process, things that we already do, but can kind of enhance with this ordinance update. The ordinance hasn't really, there was a t- uh, transit overlay, uh, district that was implemented a few years ago. And then before that, really, the ordinance hasn't been, this portion of the ordinance hasn't been touched, I think, since 2010. So, the current format would be, um, just only focusing on the central business district, um, and creating two sub-districts from there. The downtown core and the urban flex. Um, and then, in the, in, I'll kind of get into the differences between the two, but essentially downtown core is a lot of what you'd expect from, uh, your main street, from, from Ferndale's main street. And then urban flex allows for, um, some more options that tr- kind of transition well into the adjacent neighborhoods and kind of continue that walkable format without some of the, the, the density that, um, is in that downtown core. There is potential that, um, we're, we've been talking about applying, um, form-based design principles in other districts. The TOD, as I mentioned, that could be phase two. Um, it may make sense for the industrial district that we've been talking about as well, um, for future design there. Further west, west on West Nine Mile, west of Livernoy, it might make sense to, to kind of look at that district as well. And then Livernoy, I think, um, there's been a lot of attention there. We want to make sure future, um, developments there are designed in, in the walkable format, um, that we want. Obviously, we're not talking about the same type of density on Livernoy and those other places as we are here, so that's an important distinction to make. Generally, so you, when you're looking at, um, if you were a, um, business owner wanting to develop in the downtown, you would look at your zoning map first. So, this ordinance amendment would require, if you're looking in the, the downtown, you would also be looking at the regulating plan for this district. So this just highlights where those sub-districts are, um, so you can kind of see the core, the downtown core is exactly as it sounds. That's where most of the more, um, intense development, more tall development that is already permitted in, in much of the district is, would be focused there. And that urban flex kind of, um, transitions as you get to some of those outer neighborhoods and some of the, the smaller parcels in the city. So, I, I won't read every single thing on this, but I wanted to just talk about how, um, what, what are some of those updates that we've made? Obviously, there's a lot in the staff report and a lot in the, um, ordinance, uh, update. But we also have a user guide that was part of the planning commission packet. That is also meant to kind of distill a lot of, um, what's new and what's been just reshaped with different language. But, um, as I said, this is more of a design-based approach to zoning that focuses on the building form, the appearance and relationship to the street. So, um, we're getting into, we had, had heard from a lot of folks during the master plan process, you know, I don't necessarily like how that new building is designed. I don't, you know, it's not quite as architecturally interesting as some of the other things in downtown. Um, and so, uh, a lot of other communities are kind of moving towards a design-based, um, ordinance rather than focusing only on use. With this ordinance, we aren't changing, um, permitted uses in the district, but this gives us more, um, I think, uh, sets more expectations upfront about what we expect if a new building were to be designed in the city. We're also trying to encourage inclusive housing in close to transit, um, along the Woodward and Nine Mile corridor. And that's in li- in alignment with the recent adoption of the inclusive housing policy by city council. The sub-districts and frontage types I'll talk more about, uh, but those are new to this, um, to this ordinance. Trying to, um, put all of those design guidelines that lived in various corners of the ordinance in one place would help, hopefully, help streamline and have less confusion when architects bring plans to the city. Having consistent height requirements, I'll show that a little bit later, but there, if you look at the allowable height in certain districts of this, or on certain streets in the city, in the, in the, um, zoning ordinance, it's kind of piecemeal right now. This kind of aligns that, makes it consistent and factors in more of the adjacent residential nearby. Limiting off-street parking areas so that they are not directly, um, adjacent to a walkable, uh, urban district, limiting curb cuts. Those, those types of things were all thought about. And then, um, in the landscape ordinance, we updated some of the screening guidelines for off-street parking areas, included some guidance for sustainability and stormwater management. Um, and I think there'll be more, that's, this is kind of phase one of the landscape ordinance, I would say, as well. So what's really not changing is we're trying to continue that downtown Ferndale will be, remain walkable and transit supportive and incorporate all the place-making elements that we've, we've kind of been, been known for. Streamlining the process, we do have a DDA Appearance Review Committee that, um, is part of the existing ordinance. But it's kind of, it, it's not the most efficient way to do it. So it's, it's really the same committee that we'll be meeting, but now it is a requirement in the ordinance that that happens before a site plan comes to planning commission. So, uh, I think that clears things up quite a bit and fills some, um, loopholes that were existing before. I mentioned the transition to residential zones. Um, that's still important. But encouraging architecture that, um, has hints of old and new was something we talked about a lot in what is the character of Ferndale. And, um, I, I think this ordinance kind of provides more guidance for that. We're still going to require, you know, street trees and bicycle parking and things like that for downtown, so that hasn't changed. There's a lot of these, um, historic entryways. I think of Red Hook and Ensole and Found Sound. And, um, you know, there's some carve-outs in the ordinance that allow for those types of things still to be built, uh, with our build-to requirement, which I'll get into. Uh, sa- sidewalk cafes, I think we've been known for that. Those are still permitted. Sandwich board signs, so things that you would see in, in other lively downtown districts, we will still be permitting all of those. We're not changing permitted uses in the downtown district. Generally, the height has been streamlined, like I mentioned. And then, um, though we did make some updates to not allowing parking right behind a, um, wall, um, like adjacent to a downtown, um, it's still not permitted in the front yard at all, so that, that portion hasn't changed. As far as the sub-districts go, so downtown core, as I mentioned, um, this is kind of meant to establish a continuous building facade at, at the street level, maximizing some ground floor architectural variety, variety and, um, encouraging glass and some of the things that were in the transit overlay district. But kind of putting more language around those and intense statements around those. And ensuring that ground level of new buildings will be active and, you know, whether it be retail or, uh, restaurant, just making sure that there is, um, that active use instead of just a concrete wall that may or may not have, um, a, a, a store with it at some point. We're still encouraging buildings close to the front setback, but there is some flexibility that, um, I can answer more questions on in a bit. But, um, encouraging mixed use. We do have mixed use throughout the city. And the example on the left is, is one that I think we're all pretty familiar with. But, um, you know, there's other buildings that mixed use really is, it, you know, just, it just means that on the ground level, there may be office upstairs. There may be, um, you know, residential. And so we're trying to encourage that for sort of a resilient, um, you know, district that has daytime use since, instead of just, just evening use. Urban flex is the other sub-district, so kind of on the edge of the downtown district, district can serve as a transition to those, um, adjacent residential zones, but still having that walkable urban format. It could be a mixture of, of mixed-use buildings, um, and attached residential, but it's also flexible enough that you could have live-work units. So there, it does allow for, um, some setbacks from five to 10 feet that allow for some more townhome type, type, um, buildings, which we've kind of acknowledged in the master plan, the variety of ho- homes, um, that are lacking maybe in the city. And, and so those could be options, um, and kind of align with the urban residential district that was in the master plan. So along with those sub-districts, there are frontage types. So storefront, um, is a frontage type that's allowed and permitted in both districts. The stoop district, or excuse me, frontage type is, is only permitted in that urban flex area. And you can kind of see some examples, um, at the bottom here, just of, you know, a, a blank building of what that could look like. But the point is, um, the storefront is, is more for that core, um, downtown. And stoop allows for some flexibility for, for more residential at the ground level. We talked a lot about height, um, and generally, I would say that the building height remains unchanged for this amendment. So, this screenshot here on the left is sort of that, sort of that piecemeal that I had mentioned before. So, we're still requiring a minimum building height of 25 feet, which was what we had, um, planned as part of the transit overlay district a few years ago. Um, and then you can see the maximum building heights are spread throughout these districts. Um, and that, I think, just kind of streamlines and makes things consistent. We also talked about upper-levels, front setbacks and rear setbacks. What makes sense? How can we, uh, be thoughtful of any new project that, um, is adjacent to residential? Um, and alleys are important, so, um, you know, we, uh, in the master plan, it was important to maintain and keep, um, alleys active throughout the city for deliveries and pathways and, and a, a number of things and for circulation purposes. And so in areas that do not have alleys, there is, um, a larger setback required. And areas with alleys, there's less because most of our alleys are probably 16 to 18 feet wide right now. So you, you're not, you're not building right on top of whatever's adjacent to you. We also talked a lot about incentives. How, well, how should we require, um, future development to provide some community benefits? Inclusive housing, something that this, um, commission's talked about a lot. And, and as I said, council adopted a, um, inclusive housing policy that does allow for a, some bonus height. And it's only, um, in certain core districts, because districts, or portions of the district, um, essentially on Woodward. Um, and that would allow for an additional 10 feet if you did provide affordable, affordable housing that's in, in keeping with that, um, inclusive housing policy. If you had a lead seat of certified building, um, a certain percentage of open space. And if you, if a development provided a certain amount of public parking, um, and that part, I think, um, would be open to discussion as well.
Through the chair, you, you mentioned rear setbacks here. What about on the front?
So, um, the front, um, is where we have the build-to standards. So, um, in the downtown core, I believe it's 80%, you're required to build up to zero, zero-foot front, zero-front setback, um, for 80% of that site. So with that other 20%, um, you can do a number of other, um, things from, uh, private open space like a cafe, um, or, you know, a artistic en- entryway and things like that. We do also, um, include in the draft an upper-level, um, setback after the third floor. So once you're building past that third floor, you do have to have an upper-level setback. Um, and that kind of provides, um, less of an imposing feel that you probably have seen in other, um.
You get less of a canyon feel.
Less of a canyon effect, yes, absolutely.
Right.
Uh, if I could, through the chair, uh, there seems to be just a discrepancy between the draft that we have and the presentation showing 10 feet, uh, for an upper set, level setback in the presentation, but it says 15 feet in the draft. Uh, the draft is correct. Okay. Yes, 15 feet.
Hold up exactly.
Yep.
Okay. So it's the 15-foot.
It is the 15-foot, yes.
After the third floor?
Thank you. Yes, so, yeah, 15 feet after the, um, third floor. So, you'll notice throughout the draft, probably a lot of new terms that, um, weren't in the previous ordinance, but, um, you know, are, are kind of, I think, important, uh, to this, this next step. So I just mentioned the build-to line. So that is essentially the line, um, where the public street and the right-of-way to which the buildings have to be constructed to. So you can see on the image here, there's a minimum, minimum and maximum build-to, um, that requires a building, at least in the downtown district, to be 80% built to that primary frontage. Surface parking, that was updated. So, um, there's been some previous developments that had some parking, um, essentially, you know, right near the front setback. This would require that, um, the parking, should it be built under the building, has to be set back a number of feet. That way, it encourages hopefully for a develop, developer to, um, have some active ground-level uses there. Other requirements, so, um, articulation is something we talked about a lot. So on the example on the right, um, just shows probably a more interesting building than a Lego block that is, you know, kind of flat-fronted and, um, not a lot of openings and things like that. But it's, articulation is just essentially how the exterior facade of the building is composed. So, um, amassing can be reduced, basically, by making sure that the ground level's distinct and the floor area is distinct and has a different facade than the upper level. Fenestration is just openings in the building, you know, wo- windows, doors, um, other open areas. Um, and then really what hasn't changed is we've always recommended in the downtown, or, or required in the downtown, having, um, glass be the primary building material on the ground floor, um, kind of gives you that downtown feel. And so we're still requiring 80% of those windows be part of that, um, any new building construction. And then finally, we have, um, just an example of what that interaction is like when you're on the sidewalk with a building. So, dooryard is a new term that's in the ordinance that, um, kind of just acts as that transition, um, and is inclusive of sidewalk cafes and, and that, um, clear sidewalk area. So, um, the amenities that we've met specifically call out amenities that could be included in that zone, those would have to be in alignment with the city's standards for those types of things. But, um, keeping that area clear is important for pedestrians, obviously, and some of the. some of those amenities could be anything from downtown street lighting that aligns with what we have downtown, you know, bike parking, improved bus stops, more street trees, things like that. But it just kind of, this wasn't really specified in the, the current ordinance. So that's just a very short kind of overview of the highlights and obviously Erin, Kathleen and I hear for more questions, but obviously we're here tonight for a public hearing. City council would potentially review this at the end of March if the commission feels comfortable and then in April, we would finalize that user guide for, you know, anyone interested in developing or renovating projects in the downtown, included on our city's website and the DDA's website as well. The other site plan updates that I didn't really get into much, we did update, update the site plan review ordinance with a draft that is inclusive of the preliminary planning commission discussions that we've been having that I think unanimously from the development side, we've heard that those have been helpful in saving time and money in the end, but providing some parameters in the ordinance seemed like an appropriate thing to do and then updating the DDA appearance review ordinance to be part of the site plan process officially. And then we did talk a little bit about updating the alterations and expansions of what's allowed for administrative level. We essentially went with what's defined in the ordinance is less, the size of a building that is retail establishments, small, there's a definition difference between small and large in the ordinance. And then I only talked about a few of the landscape updates, but the landscape ordinance is kind of tied to the vegetative ordinance that is regulatory. So ordinance review, I think, is going to be looking at that soon and then city council as well and the environmental sustainability commission has been looking over that quite a bit as well. So you'll see in the landscape ordinance, there's an update of prohibited species. It confirms the payment in lieu of trees option that we've talked about and we've been using that, but this kind of formalizes it. And then just providing some clarity around screening, around parking areas with landscape buffers and the like.
Thank you.
Rob.
All right, we move to our, the public hearing. Again, this is a chance for members of the public to address the planning commission, questions, comments related to this update, to our, our zoning, to three different pieces of it in our downtown. We've got three minutes to share any thoughts on this subject with the planning commission. We ask that you, do you speak at the microphone so that we can record the public comment? That you state your name and address for the record and that you address your questions to the planning commission after the public hearing. We'll, so we'll take all the comments, we'll close the public hearing and then we'll work to address them. So we will open the public hearing at 7:05 PM. Is there anyone who would like to address the planning commission on this subject? All right, thank you very much. We will close the public hearing at 7:05 PM. I like to bang the gavel. We will move to questions and comments from the table. I had, I had two, one, it was from your, your comments, Justin, and I just wanted to clarify because it was a, we had a conversation about it, but I don't remember if we made a decision about it. Is office a permitted first floor active use? I see one place in here where it says that office is encouraged up, but then I don't actually see it prohibited.
Yeah, we, we talked quite a bit about it. We did end up leaving it in the active ground floor uses just because of the need for it.
Okay.
But.
I remembered we talked about it, but I didn't know if we've commented on it.
Yeah.
Thank you. And then my other question is about the height incentive and as we've talked about it and sort of as it, as it was presented, it's that affordability seems to be central to it, but as it's written, it gives much more flexibility. I personally would like to make it stronger, so I just kind of had a question for the, the commission about that because as it's written, you can, we could waive, well, basically we could grant the height incentive when one or more of the recognized benefits are provided, open space or public space, lead certification, affordable housing or public parking. And my suggestion was that it, is that it needs to be, that it needs to be affordable housing, it needs to meet that inclusive housing policy and one more, or if we want to be more flexible, because maybe we get a development that doesn't incorporate housing, that it should be a minimum of two of those items. I just, thinking about the PUD processes and other things that we've been through recently where we have a list of 12 things that we would like you to try to meet the majority of these and we have people who come and are like, well, I kind of got three, like I want to make that stronger particularly, we don't have a lot of city owned property that gives us the opportunity to, to fulfill the intent of this inclusive housing policy. So if this is a, a way to try to actually get some inclusive housing policy wins.
I think the ordinance already does that, but I would be for clarifying the language and by does that, I mean the first option, because the inclusive housing policy, correct me if I'm wrong, is a standalone ordinance, correct?
It's.
With its own enforcement.
Standalone policy right now, but it is going to be drafted into an ordinance, but yes.
Correct, so that'll, the, the end game is that'll be an ordinance independent of this and would have to be met anyway, but for clarity.
And private developments?
Sure. Well, not, only private developments that seek tax incentives.
Right.
Yeah.
Right, but this is, this, this is any private development that wants to go up to 80 feet within that certain district, whether it touches a public dollar or a piece of public property.
Yeah.
This, this would mean they have to, if they want that bonus, meet the inclusive housing policy, whether or not they want to deal with public dollars or public space.
I still agree with your first comment. I still think it might be met, but I'm good, I'm good with it. I like your first.
I just, this is one of the few opportunities for a, a city through, through an ordinance to encourage something that they've tried to codify, right? So you don't have a lot of opportunity to influence private developments.
I mean, staff would absolutely agree and I would also probably strengthen the parking portion as well to specify either increase that number, but also specify the difference between surface and, you know, structure parking too.
Increase that number.
10 was based on the.
The dollars associated with it?
Yeah, $25,000 for a garage space, but, you know, I think we could certainly update that.
Any other thoughts?
Quite frankly, I would strengthen the language for lead certified buildings as well, from an architect's perspective. I, I just think that lead certified design in today's day and age is pretty easy to obtain if you want to just pay the money to get certified. I would rather, I, I would like to increase that to another level to be at least silver.
Somebody that would be happy with being silver or above that.
Yeah, as opposed to being lead certified.
About being an architect, can you speak to that? That's not too restrictive when you're asking for affordable housing or inclusive housing on one side.
Well, maybe I am not understanding this section correctly, but it sounds like you could just have a lead certified building, not provide any affordable housing and that would allow you an extra story.
As it's written, that's correct.
But with, with the chair's amendment, you'll have to meet the inclusive housing requirements plus one.
Okay, if, if that were the case, if that were the case, then I would not necessarily recommend changing the lead certification. However, if it were, if we left it as is, saying you could meet one of these things, then I would increase the lead standard.
Makes sense. And I, I don't know if this complicates things, but you could probably tier these things too. If affordable housing is our number one priority, you could say affordable housing and, I don't know if that's too restrictive, but.
Not restrictive, but look at this clear ordinance we made, no.
Through the chair, I think that giving someone an extra story and, and, you know, and the ability to build a building that's substantially larger than any other building that we have in the downtown area right now, I think that the city deserves something significant in return. I like the idea of making this a, at least two of three as opposed to, you can have one, but maybe you do a real good job with that one. I, I think if someone actually wants to build a building of this size, parking is going to be an issue regardless, so that almost should be, as a matter of course, they have to meet a heightened parking requirement, but then tying that to one of the, one of the other additionals as well, the lead certification or the affordable housing, I think is quite reasonable.
And I should clarify too.
Open space and public spaces in there too.
The other thing that has not changed is the parking requirements, so any new development downtown would have to provide parking unless there was a waiver that meets the seven or eight criteria that we've discussed in the past too.
So this was the additional.
Right. This would be the addition of a minimum of 10, 10 site or parking spaces onsite that anyone in the public could access.
In addition to your, what you're required to by ordinance.
Right.
Okay.
So thoughts, what do we, do we want to force the, the housing and then you get to choose something else or do we want to say two of these three or two of these four? What are, what are thoughts?
To me, it's such a priority, I would force the housing.
It's clearly a council priority, which I might ask about it. It's clearly a city priority and the way we just talked about it on the screen, it's clearly a city priority, so, okay. So if we're looking for transit oriented housing options that are affordable to Ferndale residents, you know, in what, you know, is becoming a pretty hot market, then that's our top priority. Any disagreeing there or other thoughts?
Through the chair, my only question is, we did this study and we've approved a lot of housing lately.
Yeah.
So is there a tipping point when we've met the housing need and are still supporting that as our primary goal and how do we address that?
My argument is that we've met the housing need and we've surpassed it based on the master plan, but we haven't met the affordable housing need.
Fair.
I, I, I totally agree with your intention, I just, I'm concerned we haven't hit that affordable mark.
All right. Do you have clear direction or questions?
So I think what I heard was that affordable housing and then any of the other four.
Any of the remaining three.
Or three, I should say. And then parking, that portion, maybe we should clarify on street versus off street.
Okay.
Yeah, through the chair.
Or, excuse me, off, off street, structure versus surface.
Right. And is there any restriction on that as far as charging for those spaces and I don't know how you want to have that structured as well.
In terms of how it fits with the payment in the ordinance?
Yeah, I mean, it's, I guess if you're saying, hey, we're going to have 10 onsite publicly accessible parking spaces, but we're charging X amount per hour, it's no longer.
I see what you're saying.
Really a usable parking space, so I guess some recognition of that or clarification of how that can be publicly accessible.
Well, you're right, should they be required to be like metered through our public parking?
Metered through the city or?
That's a great point, because we have one rough spot now on the east side that charges whatever he wants.
Mm-hmm.
That's a good point.
So I don't know if it's free or through the cities.
Mm-hmm.
System, something like that. And since we're kind of going through the recognized benefits, for the open space, since we haven't touched on that one, you know, I'm looking at this and it just says, the space shall be publicly accessible and usable. And just kind of thinking through what, what that could actually look like, if we have a recess doorway that is publicly accessible and usable, but, or if there's a, a path to maybe a side door, let's say, I don't know, I'm just thinking of something that might not meet what we're intending as far as public open space, some, maybe tighten that up as well.
There's some language in the PUD section about what does and doesn't count as open space. Thinking about how, you know, the walkways and other things, it needs to be contiguous, it needs to be of a certain size, it can't be a walkway. Is that kind of what you're?
I mean, I don't know the best way of addressing it, depending on what the intention is, but I mean, imagine, you know, a 20 by 20 foot area for an 8,000 square foot property would qualify as 5% or actually probably be a little bit smaller than that if it's the buildable area with any sort of setback. But, you know, that verse a, you know, five foot wide walkway that kind of really isn't serving the public for open space. So I don't know, I don't know.
Yeah.
What exactly as far as language to add, if it's dimensions, so it's not just, or if it's, you know, you want to leave the flexibility. I, I think that's key, but just to make sure that that, a little bit more clarity about what's publicly accessible and usable.
Right, those are good points. And we even talked about, you know, should we require these spaces be conveyed to the city and that might get a little more complicated too, but, so we ended up leaving that out, but.
Yeah, we already said. All right, other questions and comments from the table?
Just one comment and it's a minor one, but I, I do believe there is another little discrepancy between the, the draft that we received, the map that's in the draft that we received, as well as the map that's in the additional attachment. I think the one in the draft is more correct, but I still wonder if it is completely correct. I'm going to pull it up one more time because I just scrolled off of it, but I believe it is behind, to the south of the library. We've changed that area to be downtown core. And I, I think it, it seems like it should be up to the library. And I, I'm just wondering if that is correct or?
Yeah. Yeah, that's correct. So, yeah, so it would be urban flex as soon as you get to the library.
Okay.
Yeah.
Justin's trying to take over the library.
On one, on one side.
Stop it, sir.
I love the library.
You got the best library down.
Mm-hmm.
Other questions, comments, recommendations? If not, we look for motions, there are three of them. Again, these are motions to recommend or not to the city council, this is not the final approving body for this.
Briefly, before we go into that, just for the citing in the build to, the, the primary frontage and the secondary frontage, the 80%, 60%, are we looking at to be the minimum percentage?
Which page are you on?
We're on page six, the document. It's under downtown core storefront setbacks. I believe just maybe after primary frontage and secondary frontage, if we could be, are we specifying that this is minimum percent? Is that worth having on there?
That should be, I mean, yeah.
I mean.
If we're questioning it, then sure.
For sure, it should be, yeah.
So for those two to add that.
Oh, where it specifies minimum, maximum build to, but not minimum percentage of it. Thank you, I see.
And then, yeah, let's see. For that, that same piece we were discussing with the, lost my page here, sorry.
Take your time.
Okay, upper stories, building standards deviations, the front setback. Okay, so that, that section for the recognized benefits, those are for both the height on Woodward as well as any flexibility on the front setback for that stretch on West Nine Mile where there's a 15 foot setback above the third floor? Those same criteria are being used for those properties?
No, it would actually stop essentially like.
I just got confused.
It would, it would stop where the red stops.
That, what the, what those recognized benefits are for, those four that we were discussing?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, because then I saw in that same chart on page six where there's a 15 foot setback above the third floor, there's a little footnote, says the required front setback above the third story can be waived by the planning commission per 24, 24 dash 72 C. And so that gets into the same kind of category of recognized benefits is my understanding. See, 24 dash 72 C on. Um, C, twenty-four dash seventy-two C on, on three, we're talking about the front setback?
Hmm. Okay. Yep, C three.
And so at that point, we're talking about the full, um, fifteen foot setback can be waived, um, as well as, if we're doing an additional ten feet on Woodward, and just thinking of, okay. That's for any, um, floor above the third story.
But the setbacks on West Nine Mile, not on Woodward, right?
Right.
Yes, on West Nine Mile.
It was a, a means for us to give you flexibility, um, for that above the third story requirement. So it's just the idea that you are allowed to grant a waiver in two instances, one is for additional height on Woodward in the red, and another is to waive that fifteen foot setback in the green.
Okay.
Recognizing that there can be really cool buildings that don't look like a cavern, if they're built at that, um, that it gives you that flexibility built in-
Okay.
If they give you something else in return.
Choose something else.
So if, yeah, if it is addressing that entire section as well, I think we definitely need to tighten up the languages, the language we have on there for the, those four benefits.
Yeah.
I think my last comment, sorry to monopolize the time here, but-
No, take your time.
On the, the sixty foot on the north side of West Nine Mile, um, versus all the other urban flex at fifty-five foot, um, can we talk to the decision-making there, just for that stretch?
Yeah, absolutely.
That came out of the conversation that I forgot to call into.
Yeah, yes, yes.
Okay, yeah.
So, um-
You didn't miss that one, too.
We were, we were looking at height along that stretch, and so the four parcels to the north are zone R four, which permits sixty feet there, and so our thinking was that to be consistent for that entire block, it all should be sixty feet, um, and considering the Housing Commission building behind it is, I think, seventy feet, um, so it seemed that you could still have the transition to the north to the R three, um, and, and still achieve that transition and have some consistency along the north side of, of Nine Mile. 'Cause otherwise you're saying that those Nine Mile parcels are required to be shorter than-
Than the-
The north parcels.
With it down, yeah.
Right.
Yeah, I could see us getting spotty rezoning.
Right.
Right, because they're not actually covered through this, outside of the central business district.
Thoughts on sixty-five?
I guess I don't have anything to, uh, set in my mind, I just was looking for a simplification, um, and it was really clear with the two, with just a bonus on Woodward, and then there's this other little thing that gets thrown in there, about a five foot difference, um, I mean, I understand where it's going, I guess. I like the simplicity of, of the, the standard across, but, um, I don't know, however, anybody else is reacting to that portion?
Was there anything you wanted to add, Ian, from the conversation about the fifty-five versus the sixty?
That was, I think, uh, the crux of it, uh, what, what Justin just mentioned was that, uh, in order to, you know, we already have an existing seventy foot building that's going nowhere, so in order to have a maybe gentler transition from that seventy feet down to the fifty-five foot, if you transition down from seventy to sixty and then fifty-five across the street, you've got a little bit gentler of a slope, so visually, uh, discussion was that that, that might make a little bit more sense there to allow an extra five feet for consistency in that specific location. I think if there wasn't already a seventy foot building there, it wouldn't even have been a conversation.
Right.
I just figured if we didn't update it, after you told me about the, the R four sixty versus the CBD fifty-five, that if we didn't update it, we were gonna be getting weird rezoning requests to try to make parcels consistent.
Yeah, I think that we would see a lot of variance requests, zoning board as well, looking for height variances there, and we would be seeing, the reasoning be that there is a giant building right here, and there is, uh, on a residential street, uh, just north of that commercial street, you've got a height requirement that's higher than the height requirement you got for the commercial street. So, i- it's a way to also maybe, um, head off some of those, uh, requests and, and maybe create a little bit of a harder line in the sand at that sixty feet, uh, I, I think. So, you know, you, you may still have a situation where someone comes in and says, well, I went sixty-five feet, 'cause this building has its seventy, but if you've already taken that into consideration and baked that into, uh, a new CBD ordinance, I think it's easier to put a hard line in the sand and say, no, this, this has already been considered and this is what happened.
Got it. Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Justin, um, for a, for a potential motion maker, we've just, um, we've just talked about some language changes and, um, it's, that's related to the CBD text amendment. So if there, if anyone needs to add a condition to a motion, everything we've just talked about, um, in terms of the, um, incentives and bonuses-
Sure.
That's all in CBD text amendment, motion?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
So does this work, I'll move with the Planning Commission recommend approval to the amendment of Article Four, Commercial and Office Districts to City Council, as summarized in the findings and conditions listed in the packet, as well as the additional requirements of the Planning Commission from the discussion today.
If I could interrupt for one minute, I think the only thing we also need to do is open the public hearing.
I did.
You did?
I opened and closed it.
And closed it, okay, sorry.
We had no commenters, so we're good.
Okay, all right.
Half an hour ago.
All good.
You get a chance.
I remember that.
My mistake, sorry.
It's okay. No, I questioned myself at the last one, so, although I closed it. Okay, so we had a motion by, uh, Councilman Martin, is there a second?
A second.
Okay. A second by Commissioner Cassio, um, uh, to the-
I have, if I, if I could, I have a clarity, a clarification if I could request-
Yeah, discussion on the motion.
So, um, my understanding is, Withington, the light blue, is the urban flex, and according to page seven, a building where the Withington lot basically is now, could build as high as fifty-five feet with no setback, with zero lot line. So, if I was a homeowner on Withington, I would be facing a fifty-five foot story building in front of my home, all the way up. Is that an issue?
Thank you.
Uh, so, those parcels on Withington on the south side are zone, the four parcels are zoned R four, so they were already permitted to build sixty feet there, so we weren't proposing to-
At the Withington parking lot?
Oh, okay.
Not, not, not the ones by the Housing Commission, parking lot.
They, they would also, they would be, those are, what, R three?
I want to make sure we give you the right answer.
Yeah, no, it's a good question.
Yeah, I thought it was CBD.
I thought it was parking.
No, I think it's CBD. I can grab a book.
Withington lot is not CBD.
Withington lot is not CBD?
So Withington between Woodward and Liberoi, in the current ordinance permits forty-five.
CBD.
So the urban flex would allow for fifty-five feet there.
And currently it is?
Forty-five.
Because of the way that, like, every block had a different height in the seventy?
Right, yeah, 'cause it was very piecemeal.
So do we want to talk about the, the streamlining? That was one of the, that was one of the main recommendations, that relates to what Commissioner Goring was just talking about, about why did we do a sixty and a fifty-five, that we were streamlining? So there were two and three block stretches throughout the CBD that had a patchwork of heights. So the recommendation from the Planning Commission was to, for buildability reasons and consistency reasons, to streamline that. Um, right now, the setback requirements for the downtown are for Nine Mile. Um, do we have any conversation about?
I guess for that stretch, I, yeah, I guess for that stretch, I wouldn't mind making the Nine Mile setback requirements.
Let me just get right back to it. Sorry, it's poor, not flex right now?
And so part of the thinking, too, was that, so the R three zone parcels that are on the north side of Withington-
No, we're calling it flex, so there's, actually, it's not a bill to the front line. There's all sorts of setback requirements in flex, right? Or am I looking at this wrong? This is where we can have-
There's no, there's no setback.
I think it depends on the type of structure, if it's a residential structure-
Right.
It'd be setback more.
Yeah, there's actually not a zero lot line requirement in urban flex, that was the, that was the change, correct?
It's for, uh, uh, commercial structure, I think it is still a zero, but if it's residential, then it can be, is it ten feet, I think, five to ten feet back?
Five to ten. And then, if it's a storefront, it can be zero to ten, if it's a stoop type of structure, it's five, five to ten.
So like a Thomas?
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
And the thinking was that, um, north of, north of that lot, its permitted height is forty-five, so fifty-five to forty-five, you have some, some transition as you go north.
One way to alleviate that would be, under the storefront, um, designation, you could, we could add the similar above the third story setback condition that we have in the urban core, in the downtown core, um, just for the storefront, 'cause the stoop is already back-
Mm-hmm.
Providing a more sensitive.
So that way, if you're at zero lot line, you're stepped back, if you're not at zero lot line, you're already stepped back.
Mm-hmm.
Is that in keeping with what you just suggested, Councilman?
It's exactly what I was saying.
Any other comments?
For clarification, are we discussing that for all storefront in the urban flex?
Sounds like it.
Or is that specific?
For consistency's sake, I would think we should.
That's a lot.
Yeah, it is a lot.
Unless you want to create a little subzone right there?
Or unless you do where it's fronting residential?
Oh, yeah. That's acceptable.
Because otherwise, no, you've got strange things that aren't consistent on Woodward.
Well, you're fronting residential, that makes perfect sense.
Yeah, otherwise you've got setbacks in a lower density and not on Woodward, and that's, that's strange.
Mm-hmm.
I see wheels turning in your heads, Michael and Bren. Thoughts?
Um, I'm, I'm just thinking about further down Withington where we were zoned, um, R four, you know, so now we're taking away some of their rights that they had, right? Because they already had the height to build to sixty, sixty feet there?
Mm-hmm.
So, yeah.
Yeah.
Just, just thinking about that parcel, and, and now, we're, we're taking away some of their rights, but, and, and how, how is that different than what we're talking about now? Are we, I guess we're correcting that in a way?
To me, I think it falls into the purview of the Planning Commission to make exceptions in which specific project we were looking at for that. This is an overall guiding document, not a specific, we could change it for this if the right project came along.
Well-
In the urban flex? We could just not include those four parcels in the urban flex as well.
And leave them-
R three. R four, yeah.
But they're not R four?
The four parcels, like Planavon and-
Oh.
Withington, that, the Housing Commission and the other three.
I got it, got it.
Yeah.
Yes, I like the consistency of if you're fronting residential, you're treated a little bit differently than if you're fronting business. I don't see a reason to not include them, unless I'm, what am I missing? I understand what you were saying about-
Mm-hmm.
The change.
So if you, if you don't include those four parcels, then you don't have to go through the rezoning process, so those four would have, as this map stands right now, would have to be rezoned to urban flex, it wouldn't keep the R four underlying zoning.
Okay. That rezoning's not part of the motion tonight, though?
No.
No.
For comparison purposes, what is the max building height for those parcels to the north?
Forty-five feet. For north of Withington?
Yeah.
On the north side, yes, yep.
Those can be built to forty-five feet.
Mm-hmm.
Right. Personally, I, I think a fifty-five foot to forty-five foot gradient seems to make sense. If you look at, on Nine Mile, you can build, uh, what, what, seventy feet, then you go to fifty-five feet, then you go to forty-five feet. That's, to me, that, that makes sense as a height gradient. I don't know that I would make any changes to what we're showing.
Even where you've got zero lot line, commercial fronting residential? No reason for a step back or additional setback?
Through the chair, we have the same situation, if you look down at the southeast corner there, all along the south, all, all along Troy Street-
Yep.
You've got many, many more residences that are facing that area-
Yep.
That would be subject potentially to the same issue, uh, if someone was gonna build-
Except they've already got something tall over there.
Yeah, to a certain extent, but, uh, that, that's a, a portion of that long block. I mean, in theory, you could have fifty-five foot frontage, commercial frontage all along the north side of that block, uh, if, if that's, you know, I think it's unlikely, obviously, for that to happen anytime soon, but-
Yeah.
What am I missing? Oh, wait a minute. Isn't that where the-
Credit Union one.
Credit Union, it already is taller than that.
So it's, that's permitted fifty-five-
Yeah.
Right now, fifty-five feet max, max height now.
Right.
So it wouldn't, the only thing that would change is, I guess, the storefront, um, type would be allowed.
It would be a more active-
Right.
Troy Street. I guess, uh, Councilman, at this point, if you wanted to, um, amend your motion to include that fifteen foot setback above the third story, um, where urban flex abuts residential, we can, we can vote on it and see if it passes, I just, I'm, I'm not hearing a, a strong consensus one way or another.
No, I'll accept the amendment.
Well, you can make the amendment.
I'll make the amendment.
Okay. Um, so then your motion, sorry, let me get back to this. On the CBD text amendment, was to recommend approval with-
With the findings and conditions listed in the packet and taking the, uh, conditions represented by the Planning Commission tonight, including the fifteen foot setback above the third floor when facing residential for-
Urban flex.
Urban flex, thank you, there's drawn a blank. Urban flex, thank you. That was drawn a blank.
As well as the, um, strengthening of the height incentive.
Correct.
Does the second or Commissioner Casio accept that amendment to motion?
Yes, I accept.
Sorry, I was thinking about strengthen. All right, I think I've got notes on that, um, if we need them later. Uh, we will have a, a roll call vote on this. This is the first of three motions that are recommended this evening.
Oops, forgot who's here. Um, Goring?
Yes.
Azar?
Yes.
Brazen?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Baker? Did I miss, Mark, Casio, didn't I say you? I'm sorry.
Yes.
You got Casio?
You want to vote?
This thing does a little.
Yes, with explanation.
Okay. All right, and Baker?
Yes. You got, you got, I'm, I'm.
Sorry.
You got Casio and Martin.
Yeah, theirs just shows up with the colored dot, showing they moved and seconded, so.
Perfect.
The only thing I'd want to add, and it goes without saying, but I think this is, uh, you know, potential discussion, I vote for it to recommend to the Planning Commission, or to the City Council, but in my role as City Council, my vote there is dependent on the public hearing and discussion at that table. Just to clarify.
Okay, we're now looking at the next recommended motion. This is, uh, with, in relation to the landscaping, uh, text amendment. I move that the Planning Commission recommend approval of the amendment to landscaping section twenty-four dash one ninety-one, um, to the City Council, summarized below with the following findings, um, D and E. Thank you. Is there a second?
Yes, support.
Thank you. That is a motion made by Commissioner Azar with a second by Commissioner Williamson. Is there any discussion on this motion?
Yeah, um, we're talking about landscaping. Um, and under applicability, actually, nope, stormwater management, just to make the text range there to low impact development manual, from love.
Awesome.
We won't accept both?
We love this story. So a typo in the stormwater management correction.
Thank you.
Other discussion on the motion?
And, and I guess the other, the one I had was, I know we have the, um, it looks like we pulled out the species, the recommended species list from the landscape, um, ordinance here, but, um, the prohibited species are in here as well. I don't know if that makes sense to have those both pulled out in some sort of, um, standards manual outside of the ordinance for more flexibility as well.
Sounds good. Exactly what we were thinking.
And then, um, but those.
Recommending that the lists, um,
The prohibited invasive species?
Prohibited be removed.
Be removed, and housed.
So that we don't have to update.
Referred, uh, in ordinance, and, um, housed outside of it, so you don't have to
Thank you.
change the text every time a new invasive species comes along.
Mm-hmm, thank you. Others? Okay. And we'll have a roll call vote on that motion. Um, oh, I'm, I'm so sorry, um.
I accept the amendment, yes.
Thank you, Commissioner Azar, accepts the amendment of correcting the, the typographical error and, uh, removing the prohibited species list from the ordinance, uh, and putting it in an outside document. Commissioner Williamson?
I think it's a good idea.
Thank you, okay. The chair is still referenced, though. All right, now we're ready for a roll call.
Okay. Let's see, um, we'll start this way. Casio?
Uh, yes.
Brazen?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Goring?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Azar?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes. That motion passes. Let us now move to the third recommended motion regarding the site plan review text amendment.
I recommend the Planning Commission recommend approval of the amendment to Article ten, Site Plan Review, as City Council has summarized with the findings below F and G.
Thank you, that's a motion by Councilman Martin. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, that's a second by Commissioner Brazen. Is there any discussion on the motion, uh, related to site plan review text amendments?
Through the chair, just a small point, but on the proposed revision to the language of section twenty-four, two forty-six, stating that a C, CDD shall provide a site plan approval letter. It, it's, the, the way this is phrased is not really clear, uh, to me. Shall provide a site plan approval letter and noted plans upon request of the applicant noting met and conditions that are outstanding. I think what this is trying to say is, uh, essentially that the CDD shall provide an approval letter stating, these are the conditions that have been met, and these are the conditions that still need to be met.
Not a site plan approval.
I, I just think the language should be tweaked to make it a little bit clearer there.
Did you follow that?
Makes sense to me, yeah.
Okay. Uh, Dan, would you accept that amendment?
I do.
Chair motion?
Yes.
Thank you. Any other discussion on the motion? All right, we'll have a roll call vote, please.
Goring?
Yes.
Azar?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Brazen?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Casio?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes, thank you, that motion passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you all. It's a good process, we talked about a lot.
I was about to thank you, Kathleen and Aaron, so thank you very much. It's, it's exciting to have, um, things that were in such disparate places pulled into one, one document, um, both for, business owners, property owners that we do business with, but also for this body, so, um, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, we will move now to new business, um, looking at six A. This is the project at one thousand Woodward Heights, the dog boarding and dog walking business. This is a site plan review. We will start with an introduction from our city staff.
Hello. So for this particular site plan, Five Eight's Architecture is requesting a site plan approval on behalf of the company Royal Oak Dog Walkers for one thousand Woodward Heights Boulevard. This property is currently zoned M one, as well as to the west, the east, and the south is also M one, to the north is zoned, I've, let's see, this R two or R three? I'll have to find that. But, the proposal is, um, the use is accepted in this area in M one, it's a
R two.
R two, okay. And for, uh, short-term boarding and grooming, uh, dog boarding and grooming. Some of the things to note for this particular site plan are the access and circulation, um, per the zoning ordinance for pet boarding facilities, onsite vehicular circulation shall be configured to accommodate vehicles within the boundaries of the property. Drop off or pickup of pets shall not stop on an, or park on a public street. And the current proposal is for drop off and pickup to occur within the parking spaces, which is a shared parking agreement with the surrounding businesses. Let's see, furthermore, uh, as part of the landscaping proposal, there are several existing trees on site, and the applicant, um, claims that the trees on site satisfy the tree requirements, so that's another consideration for you to look at. And finally, um, one of the other things that we discussed internally was the, um, integration of a observation deck to observe the pets that are in the fenced-in area to the west of the property in this proposal. And in our discussion, we determined that this would be appropriate based on the deck being part of the, um, primary building. And with that, I don't think I have any other updates, so I welcome the applicant to come up and speak more about this.
Thank you, is the applicant here? Welcome back.
Hi, everyone. Um, my name is Catherine. I'm the owner of Royal Oak Dog Walkers. Um, we have fourteen other dog walkers that provide services for dog walker, or sorry, dog owners in Royal Oak, Ferndale, and surrounding areas. Currently, we have about three hundred active clients, um, and fourteen other walkers who I already mentioned. There are also, are there walking the dogs. And, yeah, you explained it so well. I'm looking to expand my business to be able to include that short-term boarding, which I'm unable to do so, um, with the current setup. And I'm really excited to be here, so, thank you. I will turn it over to you.
Thank you. Hi, welcome.
Hi, Grant Jeffries, Five Eight's Architecture. Um, I, I believe Brad, uh, my business partner, was here last month as a discussion item. So, not much has changed, I think, since last time you've seen it, other than additional drawings. At that point, it was just kind of the, um, the schematic site plan. And regarding the shared parking agreement, um, it's, it's the, so the lot directly south of the building, is, uh, like the farm field table parking lot. Um, it's the same landlord, same, uh, ownership team. Right now, we're proposing, in order to get Catherine's business up and running, to use, um, that existing parking lot for the parking requirements now. But Kelly and Brooke are with the ownership team, and they could, um, speak to, they're eventually, similar to Drifter Coffee down the street, they own several of the buildings in that general vicinity, and there's going to be a, a sort of a overall, um, master plan for the area that would add, that would resurface the parking, add additional spots. And that's kind of why the, uh, that front, um, ADA ramp and observation deck is a little bit offset to the west. Is where, where, we have that future, um, site work in mind. There's gonna, um, potentially, if, if it's not an issue with the, um, parking in front of the building, we want to leave space for having three parking spots in that area, so that's why that deck is kind of offset. Um, and then the, the, uh, dog run to the west, um, is about sixteen hundred square feet. And then, that would obviously be a, a six-foot tall opaque fence. Right now, we're leaning towards a, a wood fence. We want it to kind of fit in with the industrial nature of the neighborhood. It's not going to be like a, a chain-like fence with vinyl slats in it or anything like that. We want it.
Permitted anyway.
Good to know. So, yeah, it's going to be, uh, you know, a, an attractive fence, um, and, and it'll be opaque so that dogs aren't chasing people walking by on the sidewalk or anything like that, so.
Is there a sidewalk there?
Well, I guess, uh, eventually, if the, uh, twenty nineteen Woodward Heights, um, streetscape happens, there could potentially be, but.
Going down that side. I've got one question, um, uh, on the, on the plans, and then I've got a couple of questions for Catherine, too, so. But I wanted to ask about, as it's designed right now, um, there's, there's a lot of business taking place in the basement. I wonder if you could talk a little bit about safety and egress in the basement? So, if people and dogs needed to get upstairs, and that mean stairway isn't usable, is there a, a window that's got an egress, or what's the, what's the plan?
Oh, that's a, that's a good point. Um, so I, I believe, and I'll have Catherine confirm this, I believe that the basement would only be accessible to staff members, um, not, not to clients.
Okay.
Currently, there only is the, um, the one form of egress in the existing stair that's there. We'd certainly be open to adding, uh, once we get further into the, into applying for permit and doing the sets, adding an egress window, like you would see in a, a residential basement, basically, that meets the.
Basically what I was thinking.
Yeah.
Yeah. Particularly because you've got, if I'm looking at it correctly, and this is where I, I needed you to help me, um, just interpret the plans a little bit. Where the, uh, so where the fenced-in area is going on the west side, it looks like, I'm looking at floor plan basement, which is sheet number A one, A one dot O?
Mm-hmm.
Do I see where it says grooming area, um, and then we've got short-term boarding area, but over near grooming area, is that, is that a window that I see in the wall?
Yeah, it might be just like a small, one, like a typical standard basement window, so.
Yeah.
We would, we would choose one of those to kind of extend down to the, I believe it's like forty-four inches, uh, maximum above the, the basement level.
Yeah, it looked like you might have a, a good opportunity, if the fenced area is going on that side, to have, you know, sort of that second egress out into the fenced area, so if people or dogs needed to, to get out. The, the basement was the only question that I had, because if people and dogs are going to be downstairs, and we need to move around for safety.
Yeah, and the, the base, even though the basement is where the kennels are located, I, I think, uh, the intent of the boarding would be, that the dog isn't in the cage all day. It's more of like, uh, you know, they're, they're either in, in the, um, cabin, I'll call it itself, or they're out in the dog run, um, and then the actual crating of the dogs would be for temporary purposes.
Oh, so, because first floor says retail and meeting space and break room. So, wait, okay, so where are the dogs? So office on the second floor?
Yes, the, so the second floor is kind of a loft, that would be, just be, um, Catherine's office. The first floor would kind of be, um, space to meet with, with potential clients. That's where the, the people would drop their dogs off.
Right.
In term, and then I, I think most of the time, the dogs would either, and, and she's not planning on having a large number of dogs boarding at any given time. They would either be, um, just kind of loose in the, on the first floor, or m- most of the time out in the dog run.
Okay. Maybe these are Catherine's questions, then, because I, I did have a question about what exactly short-term boarding means, because I know overnight boarding is permitted in the district, so if the business were to evolve, that's a permitted use, which is, which is a good thing.
Yep.
But I wondered, um, how many staff might be on site at one time? I imagine that a lot of the dog walkers are kind of deployed, they're not coming to the office, they're going to their work sites, just based on how my dog walker works. She's, you know, she's, she's out at her work site. So just kind of wondering, how many staff might be on, on site, um, and, and how many dogs at one time?
Yeah, so primarily how our business works is that we're going to the owners' homes, and we're walking their dogs there. So, short-term boarding, uh, more or less would be the staff taking the dogs to this dog run, letting them run around, using that as a service, and then taking the dogs back home.
Oh, okay.
Um, so that would be more along the lines of the, it's very short-term boarding.
Okay.
Um, and then what was the other question?
How many, how many staff do you think, I know you've got fourteen employees, but I imagine on site, that's probably a much smaller number.
Much smaller, probably, like, right now, we have a little four hundred square foot office space, and it's just me and then the team manager who are in there. So I imagine it wouldn't be more than, I mean, at most, maybe three.
Right.
Staff, because we would have somebody monitoring the yard, and then, um, the team manager, and then me as well. And then staff meetings, that would take place, but those only happen once a month.
Sure, so you might have someone in the grooming area.
Hmm, yeah.
Groom the dogs.
So the grooming, yeah, again, that would just be, that service hasn't actually been added to my official list of services as of yet.
Okay.
That would be something that maybe eventually down the line I could offer, but more so, um, to have that facility in the basement. More, I would say it would be more towards, if the dogs get muddy when they're playing in the yard, we would have that option to be able to wash them off and dry them, and return them back to their homes, um, nice and clean.
Got it. So, it's probably, you know, the couple of management team members, um, and then maybe one or two people who are there with the dogs.
Yeah, exactly.
So when we, we worked with a couple of other, um, uh, dog, we have a lot of dog-based businesses in Ferndale.
For sure, yeah.
And when we worked with K nine to five, um, working with her to, to find the right location, because she looked at a bunch of things before she ended up where she, where she is. One of the things that we talked about was, in her business model, sort of what's the, the dog to, to human ratio?
For sure.
Because she's got dogs that are there for eight or ten hours a day.
Yeah.
So your business model's a little bit different.
It is different, yeah, because I, I want to be clear that it's not a doggy daycare. I still want to keep that primary sense being the dog walkers, but just being able to add this addition. to add this additional service of bringing the dogs to the yard, letting them play around, but keeping that ratio pretty small. I know at the daycares, it gets pretty large.
Yeah.
And since the space is just so small, it wouldn't make sense to have more than, I mean, at the very most, ten dogs there at once. I just, physically, I don't think it's possible.
Yeah.
Which is fine, and it's actually what I'm more, what I would like to do, rather than a large-scale thing such as K nine to five.
Okay, thank you. And are you comfortable with the suggestion of an egress window just for safety on the lower level?
Yeah.
Okay.
Sounds great.
Thank you.
Okay. Is that good, or?
Those were my only questions. Oh, I'm sorry, I had one other.
Yeah.
About trash disposal and waste pickup, but if the dogs aren't on-site a lot, it might not be that relevant. We've got-
Right.
We, along with many other communities, this is not just a Ferndale problem, we have a rodent problem and other things.
Oh, yeah.
So, I wanted to ask a little bit about waste pickup and disposal, and will it be a metal trash can? I know, I know there's not a dumpster, but-
Yeah, I mean, I would as, I would assume so. Obviously, it, we wouldn't want anything smelling or anything like that.
I think rodents can shoot through.
Yeah, absolutely. That would, to me, that would just be a given, but yeah, that's what I think.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any questions for the applicant and the architect?
Through the chair, actually. We had talked about separating pedestrian traffic from cars, so I know a lot of your volume's coming through a parking lot, you've got a clearance there, but there's not just a pedestrian path. If we understood how the driveway off of Woodward Heights was being used again, and how would we separate bikes and pedestrians from vehicles is, how would that be addressed?
Yeah, so currently, the, the existing driveway off of Woodward Heights, there's a, there's a fence between that driveway and the parking lot, so we're proposing, at least in this temporary setup, until the, the overall site gets developed, to create an opening in that fence that's in line with the ADA van-accessible aisle way. So, if people are parking in that lot, they're basically entering onto the sidewalk to, directly to the east of the building, and that's where the, the bike racks would be located, and then they could either continue on to where the ADA ramp is located, or there's also that little side door there. So, I'd imagine that the driveway probably wouldn't be used very often, maybe by the staff, when they come and are there for a short while.
So, to provide pure pedestrian, somebody arrives to the site by foot-
Okay.
And is, you know, or by bike, they either have to ride through a parking lot, which puts them in the path of traffic, or on that driveway. So, would there be the potential to have a parallel pedestrian walk that's not in a drive, even though there's not a sidewalk on either side of the property, it's still, if someone's arriving at the site, you don't want them to have to go with traffic? So, is there a way to separate the two?
We could extend the sidewalk to the east of the building, a little further towards Woodward Heights. There's not, there's no sidewalk currently on Woodward Heights-
I know there's not, but-
-that we could attach to, but we could certainly extend it further north to get it closer to the street, so that there's less overlap between pedestrians and cars.
I think it's important to set up a safe trap, path of travel, separate from vehicles.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Thank you, Commissioner Zarek.
All right. I guess I'll just go to this topic. So, the observation deck, for the purpose of this site plan, is considered part of the discussion, part of the principal structure. Is that my understanding? So, that allows for the, the entire fenced-in run to be considered side yard? Is that why it's not in the front yard? Is that, has that topic come up before the city, as far as, you know, a ramp going up to a deck being considered part of the principal structure for purposes of front, side, that rear yard discussions?
So, we kind of talked about this a lot, especially with our building inspector, to kind of figure out what would be the best course of action for this. And everything that we found says that a deck can be part of the primary structure, and that because of that, as well as the ADA compliance that we can, that we are allowed to have as well, that that would be all considered as one unit, and then being able to have the side yard.
Gives you a lot more in front yard.
And even so, I mean, as it is right now, it's setback even further than I believe it needs to be, as far as setbacks go.
Yeah, if it was a new structure was being placed on the, the property. Okay. So, I guess that was just one point of clarification, to see the, the thought process on that, just if we move forward with any other sort of plan that might look at that similarly. I guess some of my other questions are maybe just on the city's review of the application, just kind of confused some stuff on the chart, as far as like maximum density of units per acre. It said that the proposed is eight, and I don't think that that was appropriate for the site, unless it was missing something. Once again, you know, like as far as the requirement for deciduous trees, I was looking at, you know, thirty, one for every thirty feet of road frontage, and kind of trying to figure out where that calculation was coming from, as far as what the road frontage actually is, and if you're considering the primary and secondary frontage, or just the primary on that calculation?
Oh, it's gotta just be primary.
Right, it's just a little-
Okay.
Yeah. I can't imagine it.
Imagine, I just saw like the two different-
Can't imagine it's doubled because you're on a course.
Because I think that road frontage up there is-
A hundred-ish?
Close to a hundred, then seventy-four, but I don't know, just looking at the different numbers that were on that review, I just was looking for some clarification on that. And I actually did notice, it looks like on the, on the site plan, you have seven existing trees, and it says the proposed is four existing. So, I don't know if that was from the city review, or which of those trees are actually going to remain, and if there's any information about species, or if it's, you know, the quality of the tree as well.
Just from our standpoint, we're not planning on removing any of the existing trees, so as long as the existing trees meet the requirements. If they don't, then, then we'd obviously be happy to add.
They're about to become urinals, so I don't think the quality's gonna be-
On the outside, outside of the fence, mostly.
Yeah, I think that's kind of where it came from, too. I know that there is, because even looking at the aerial photos, there are other trees on-site, but it wasn't like a frontage tree, per se.
I just was looking for some of that clarification, as far as like the city review. Just more clarity on the, some of those numbers, when we get the, the packet. If it's, if we need four trees, there's definitely more than four trees there, so.
Are you comfortable with the recommendation of allowing the existing trees to count for that?
I believe so. I mean, I, we don't have, you know, any information of the size of the trees, the species of the trees, anything like that, if the trees are actually on our invasive species list, or non-permitted trees. But they're existing trees, and a mature tree, it's a lot more benefits than planting a new tree, so I think it's a, a great way to go.
Thank you. Other questions for the applicant or staff, or the commission? So, if we are, if we're ready to think about a motion, I heard three, uh, I heard three conditions discussed here. One was about a basement egress window requirement, that a metal trash can be used for dog waste disposal, disposal, and then the pedestrian access, safe pedestrian access from Woodward Heights be provided. Does that cover your intent?
Separated from vehicular, yeah.
I'd like to make a motion in the matter of one thousand Woodward Heights. The Planning Commission approved the site plan based on plans dated or received by the Planning Department on January thirty-first, twenty eighteen, with the following findings and subject to the following conditions listed, including extend the pedestrian walk north to Woodward Heights, the addition of an egress window in the basement, and separation metal, separate metal trash can for animal waste disposal.
Second.
That was a motion by Commissioner Brazen, with a second by Commissioner Garrick. And you know what, I just realized, I forgot to do, was there anyone in the audience that had a question or a comment on the site plan? I just realized. We've got discussion on the motion, so if there was anyone, totally forgot to ask.
Okay.
We've got any discussion on the motion at the table? Okay, then we'll have a roll call, though, please.
Martin.
Yes.
Brazen.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
Cassio.
Yes.
Oops, let's go up to Brent Garrick.
Yes.
Azar.
Yes.
And Baker.
Yes, that motion passes. Thank you very much. Welcome to Ferndale.
You'll have to change your name now to Ferndale Dog Walkers.
I noticed that Erin had already alluded.
Yeah.
We're just kidding.
Is it really? No.
Stop it, Dan.
What do you mean? That was for it.
All right. Thank you very much, everybody. We will move to item number six B. This is a discussion of an off-street parking lot on Hilton Road, on some city-owned property, parcel two-five-dash-three-four-dash-two-seven-eight-dash-oh-five-six, which rolls right up your tongue. This is, I know that this is a conversation that started a while ago with a business owner, a business owner and property owner, who was looking to acquire some city, city property, and the city's been working to re, sort of refine. Typically, we, we wouldn't be looking to add on-street parking, you know, to retail frontage, but I know you guys have worked over the last year a lot to kind of refine this, this design, to find something that, you know, fits within the ordinance, but also helps alleviate some of the, the parking pressure in the area, so. I will make you introduce.
So, this particular site plan is on behalf of Waterworks Plumbing. As you mentioned, this area is about just a surface parking lot. The area's zoned mixed-use, too, and so parking is in the commercial business area. This site was previously owned by the city, and was sold to David Graylin, who is now the owner of it, and the applicant for this. We've had several conversations with this, kind of tweak everything and figure out the best options for screening and circulation, and among a lot of other things-
Water, yep, yep.
-stormwater, all those items. And I don't really have anything else to introduce, if the applicant's interested in coming up and kind of speaking about it.
Thank you very much. Welcome.
Bill Mosher, on behalf of the applicant.
I was gonna say, you're not David Graylin.
Nope. He's pretty busy with all the stormwater right now.
One would think, yeah.
He showed up, and then he had to leave. Yeah, basically, I wish we were bringing something more exciting than a fourteen-space parking lot, but that's kind of what it is. Be happy to answer any questions. I know one of the, the conditions of approval, or subject to approval, would be the wall and/or the fence along the alleyway. We did put additional plantings, and we can put more additional plantings, working with the Planning Department. I want to say they've been very helpful. You should be proud of them. And that's about it.
Thank you very much, Bill. All right. So, this is something that we don't typically see in our M X D districts. We're usually looking at buildings, not at parking lots. There are some existing buildings. There's some privately-owned property to the south of this, and the conversation is about adding surface parking, making it as harmonious as possible with the district, and allowing it to service those small buildings that are there on-site, that really don't have other parking. So, conversation, um, sorry, I want to do this again, which I just did last time. Were there any questions or comments from the audience on this item? No? I missed it last time. I didn't want to miss the end. Questions or comments from the table? Sure. Oh, yep, take your time. Pulling up our documents here. I wonder, Erin or Justin might know a little bit more of the, of the background on this. You know, typically, we're, we're not adding surface parking, so what were some of the, some of the benefits that you saw-
Sure.
-to adding surface parking in M X D, typically trying to encourage?
Yeah, absolutely. I can fill in some of the blanks. That was around when the sale was being discussed, and we talked a lot about it with council and the mayor and other city staff, just about-
The former chair, I remember.
And the former chair, yes. And I, you know, we probably would not encourage more parking, but this site is deficient, and, you know, we encouraged, I think, maybe in the purchase agreement, that, you know, we acknowledged that this was the preferred use by the applicant and, and the purchaser, but we did acknowledge, you know, if there was a way to develop this site into more retail or something along those lines, we would be open to that. The applicant did look at that, presented a little concept option, but it would also have been parking deficient as well.
Whatever he built, would have that-
Exactly. So, this site, you know, has a few commercial businesses there, plus David's existing Waterworks business, and I think, long-term, this is probably, probably makes sense, and if, you know, if, I think if David could have acquired the parcel to the south that is owned by the adjacent church, that church is still active, if you, if you could have acquired that parcel, maybe there'd have been more room, but it's quite a small site point, I think one, four acres, I want to say. So, you know, this, would this, if this moved forward, David would combine the parcel, so it would be tied to the other, the existing commercial businesses, it would be that accessory business.
So that they're not deficient in the future, or so they could go up, or something?
Yes, with, with the trash enclosures, that is desperately needed on the site as well, so.
Oh, okay.
Right.
So, that would service the, the two adjacent buildings. I didn't catch that.
Through the chair, my question's about lighting. It mentions goosnet light fixtures and interior fixtures. I just wondered if there was a fixture selected, and it's been checked for all the light quality and pros.
I think that was a condition.
Condition, yeah. So, there wasn't quite enough placement at the time, some of the timing provisions, that required.
We'd be willing to do that.
Anything else, Commissioner Zarek? Other questions for the applicant, for the city, if not a motion on the site plan?
I'm moving the matter to two-five-dash-three-four-dash-two-seven-eight-dash-oh-five-six. The Planning Commission approved the site plan based on the plans dated or received by the Planning Department as of February sixteenth, twenty eighteen, with the terms of the findings and subject to the following conditions, as listed in the back end.
I support the motion.
Thank you. That was a motion by Councilman Martin, with a second by Commissioner Williamson. Any discussion on the motion? When Justin and I talked yesterday, we talked a little bit about stormwater retention, and, you know, perhaps the ability to do a bioswale, or, or some other drainage opportunity, is that based on the way that the motion is, is written? Is that flexibility still preserved? Okay. So, we, so we might see underground detention, we might see something a little bit different.
Correct.
Something could be not well.
Okay.
And if you look at that-
Just wanted to make sure we didn't limit your flexibility. Great, I just wanted to make sure we didn't limit your flexibility.
The aisleway is a little bit wider than normal, and that was based on the, the discussions that Mr. Graylin had with the Planning Department. He's not opposed to, in the future, doing a building there, but then there, there was that parking deficiency, but he's not a developer, and it kind of scared him. And, but we've looked at it, and we've had discussions, that there could be a building there in the future.
Yeah.
And so, we want to leave it wide enough so we can put some supports for, for a building, we didn't want to put a minimum of twenty-four-foot aisleway there, and then not be able to drive around the aisle and have to redo the parking.
I just wanted to make sure that we were leaving you the flexibility that you needed to, to deal with your stormwater in whatever way you chose. All right, then we'll have a roll call vote, please. Cassio.
Yes.
Gurik.
Yes.
Azar.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Brayson.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
Baker. Yes, the motion passes.
Thank you very much.
We'll now move to, uh, number seven, are there any, any discussion items this evening? I said I was gonna bring the R V ordinance back around.
Sure.
So, you can let us know, um, should we have a Planning Commission member on the ordinance committee? Is there, we've talked about two things tonight that have overlapped with ordinance.
You have an ordinance committee member on the Planning Commission.
Oh, never mind. Should've known you were causing trouble. Great, I just, there were two things that have tonight that overlapped with things that were coming to the ordinance committee, so.
Yep.
Okay, great.
And for the record, I was around just the opposite of what you were for the first discussion about the definition of R V or what have you, and the clarification, but I didn't catch the second discussion.
Um, so, the request has been made, um, by the ordinance committee, um, that the, the Planning Commission revisit, um, and I guess, rather than table, actually make a recommendation up or down on, um, R V ordinance, so, is that something you would kick back our, our way at the next meeting?
Yeah, absolutely.
Does it require, is it a public notice?
It is, it is, um, but.
So, maybe not the next meeting, maybe the one after?
Probably the one after, yes, um, and, and speaking with the city attorney earlier this week about it, um, he saw some things that we could kind of, I think, make more clear, and he'd be happy to come to the next meeting. Um, it seemed like a lot of the discussion was, I think there was a number of things we talked about, it's been a minute, but, um, I know one of the conversations was what is the difference between R V and being so close to the, a building, and say, like, a, you know, a GMC Suburban that's filled with gas? Do they make Suburbans anymore? I don't know.
My dad's work truck.
I ride a bike.
Yeah, you know, like.
But, but yeah, is there a big difference between, you know, a large vehicle like that and an R V that fills with gas, and as far as fire, um, requirements? And so, that's something we can look into as well.
I guess it's a length of time issue.
Right.
For vehicle storage, but that's a great point, what's the difference in vehicles?
And quickly, well, because a lot of R Vs are trailers, so you park it, and then you can, uh, put it back up and remove it, whereas a, you know, a truck, you can pop it in, you know, within two minutes, be out of the truck.
Yep.
Yeah, if there's any, any insight, um, whether it's from the, the city attorney about definitions, dimensions, whatever, or whether it's from the fire department about differentiation between something that can drive and something that can't drive?
Yeah. That makes sense.
Because are people gonna start getting, you know, tickets for having the van parked in the driveway for two weeks? I hope not.
Yeah.
Right.
Right.
But if that, but if that's the point, you know, if the point is not to have large flammable, flammable objects too close to each other, then we, it might have a big problem in Ferndale.
Well, and there's, um.
One sec, uh, Councilman, I just wanted.
Uh, the biggest difference would be the definition, is, is we're really identifying our recreational vehicles as opposed to a personal vehicle or a business vehicle, where, you know, you would, the definition, you know.
I think I just wanted to be, like, put a really fine point on it. Are we talking about things that are sitting for a long period of time and are not mobile, or not easily mobile, or is this something broader than that? That, that was part of the conversation
Okay.
at, at the last meeting, was, is, is this, are, is, is it even necessary, or is this just, you know, like, one person's nuisance is another person's vacation?
I think it comes down to, I'll paraphrase what I think I'm hearing from you, is, is it a safety issue or not, right?
Is it controllable or not?
Is it controllable? I mean, I'll use the example of on my, on my block, there's one winters in Florida with it, and during the summer, it's, it's got more square footage than his house does, uh, you know, so the question is, is, is that, is create a safety concern or not? And I think that's what the OPINE needs to be coming back, uh, for the public hearing.
Would agree, thank you.
Um, any other discussion items, uh, from the staff, or?
More of just administrative items, I don't know if we're taking those now too.
Go for it, let's move to number eight, administrative items.
All right, um, I wanted to congratulate Commissioner Ian Williamson, um, he is the new Board of Zoning Appeals Chair.
Hey!
Thanks, Justin. So, Ian has been an awesome liaison, and still is going to be the liaison between both, and we cleared it up with the clerks and city attorney to make sure that he could still serve in both capacities, um.
That was my first question.
Yep. Ours too, so. So, um, we're excited, Ian has done a great job, I think, in keeping the B Z A informed of, um, what we've been discussing at the Planning Commission, and then suggesting to staff on, you know, uh, ordinances that probably could be updated after seeing them a few times, um, being requested reverences, so, um, we're excited, and Commissioner, or Board Member Judy Palmer will remain as vice chair as well, so.
Okay.
Dynamic duo, duo moving, moving forward.
Thank you.
And, and then, um, in less exciting news, I think the medical marijuana ordinance will probably come before you all for a public hearing in late March, or, or the second meeting in March.
Is this coming to us from council, or going to council from us?
Going to, uh, council had some discussions last fall and summer, um, and I think we're all pretty much on the same page on what next steps are, so it would be public hearing with Planning Commission to council, and then council would, maybe we should, uh, make that, is, is there a meeting on April twentieth? Maybe we should make that a, a reality, but.
Oh, my gosh.
On that note.
I had to.
That was a good one, sir, um. All right, we will adjourn, it is, uh, eight-twenty-nine. All right, I like it. Thank you, everybody.